Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started on the agenda this evening, we have a couple special presentations we'd like to make. And you know, our community is one that's made up of a lot of people that volunteer their time and their specialty and their efforts. And this is not lost on our youth as well. The Beaver Creek Youth Council is an organization that helps to stimulate leadership within the students in the high school. And they do countless projects throughout the years. So tonight, we have two of our graduates that we would like to honor. There are two tonight that are not here as well, but we are so proud that you were able to join us tonight. So if you two would join us up here for a minute and stand in between us. Right over here. And don't be surprised, you might get handed a microphone here in a minute. All right. Well, I would like to read these. They both read the same except for the name, so I'm going to read it and then I want to ask Mr. Adams to do the presentation because I know he's been working with you. So the city of Beaver Creek commends and appreciates these two students for showing the importance of community youth involvement. You engaged your talents, opinions, and desires to make a difference. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council behind you, thank you for your service and dedication to the Beaver Creek community. And so, Don, would you please present those? All right. Well, I know Don will have a word or two to say, but I would like to offer the microphone to you to start off with, and then you can pass it right along.
Thank you very much. Beaver Creek Youth, thank you guys first. Thank you for inviting us out and recognizing us. Thank you very much. Beaver Creek Youth Council is all about developing leadership through community service. That's pretty much like our thing that we do. But to me, Beaver Creek Youth Council was also something kind of really big in my life. As a military kid, I came to this community from Oklahoma, and I didn't really know very many people. And Beaver Creek Youth Council gave me the opportunity to connect with all my fellow classmates and community mates, and it just really gave me the opportunity to have a place within the community.
Adding on to that, I definitely think that this organization deserves more appreciation, and it's definitely something that can have a really great impact on one individual's life. For me, I joined during a time of COVID, so I wasn't really knowing what to expect. I kind of just popped onto a Zoom meeting and was like, hey, guys, what's up? But I think through that, I've learned so much about leadership and communication and helping others, and I really think that this organization has done a lot for me, and I'm really proud of to be a part of it.
Pass it on over to Don. I am involved with the Beaver Creek Youth Council because of my position on council, and I go to a lot of the meetings. And as you can tell just by listening to these two tonight, as most kids that come up here and talk are usually afraid to talk or just um or um, whatever. These two young people are good examples of what we have here in Beaver Creek and with our youth, and we should be really proud of the work that they do. I'm looking forward to see what they accomplish when they go into college. And I'm going to ask you where you're going to go to college here in a minute. But thank you for what you've done, and certainly you, going through the COVID part, that had to be very difficult, not being able to talk to anybody or go to the meetings even till just now. So thank you very much. And where are you going to college?
I'm going to college at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill.
I'm going to school at the Ohio State University to study music and English.
Well, thank you very much. Mike, let me have that a second. And you know, we want to thank our students, and we also want to thank the two that were not able to join us tonight. And the adults that lead these youth, we owe a big pat on the back too as well. So thank everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have another proclamation we'd like to do tonight. And if you're a regular watching this show, so to speak, we do this every year. So come on up here and join me. You're not going to bring the pile with you here? We're going to add to the collection here tonight. And we are here this evening to declare scleroderma awareness month. Now, it only took me two or three years to learn how to say that word, but I am just about, I've just about figured it out. So whereas scleroderma is a chronic connective tissue disease that affects a patient's immune system by becoming overactive and attacking its own tissues through an overproduction of collagen. And whereas the disease can develop and is found in many age groups, but its onset is most frequently between the ages of 25 and 55, with approximately 15,000 Ohioans and 300,000 people in the United States being affected. And whereas scleroderma, symptoms can range from very mild to life-threatening and can cause thickening and tightening of the skin, as well as serious damage to internal organs, including the lungs, heart, kidney, esophagus, and gastrointestinal tract, just about as hard as scleroderma. And whereas prompt and proper diagnosis and treatment can minimize the symptoms of scleroderma and lessen the chance for irreversible damage, as there is no cure at this time. And whereas the Scleroderma Foundation's mission is support, education, and research to help find the cause of and care for this disease. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire Beaver Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as scleroderma awareness month in the city of Beaver Creek. So I would like to present this to you and turn the mic over to you as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, city council. Every year I come in, and I can't say thank you enough for your steadfast support for the Scleroderma Foundation of Ohio, the Scleroderma Foundation nationwide and globally, especially my family. I try not to get emotional. I told myself I wasn't. And as I get myself together, once again, just thank you for steadfast support, Mayor Stone especially, seeing you out and about. And as Mayor Stone said, it affects many thousands, hundreds of thousands of men and women, predominantly women. And just one thank you. Don't want to break down too much. My son and my wife may be watching, so they told me I better not cry. This is the very first time. And additionally, I know Mayor Stone, last year, he said, you know what? I think we've done this a few times. I said three. Mayor Stone said, no, five. So today makes it six. So six years consecutively, then we had the COVID year in between. But again, thank you. Thank you very much. And it's great to see your faces around once again. And again, I can't say thank you enough, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, and we're very proud to be, to declare that month as scleroderma awareness month. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize for getting emotional.
Number six. He brought them all with him.
Thank you. Good to see you.
And we'll see you next year.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Vales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And if I would ask you to stand and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we'll remain standing for just a moment. Last week, Mayor Scott Hadley was laid to rest after a long life of serving the community where he grew up. Scott was very active even before we became a city and was a founding member of the Beaver Creek Rotary, a charter member of the Chamber of Commerce, and served on the Committee of Eleven, which studied the pros and cons of why we became a city. Scott went on to serve on Beaver Creek City Council for 12 years, four of those as our mayor. Scott grew up in Beaver Creek, and through their many years together, he and his wife Nancy have been active and out front in most every aspect of our city's growth. The one that I thought they were most proud of was the popcorn, other than being the mayor, it was the popcorn festival. They served 28 years organizing the popcorn festival, and I think they were very instrumental in making it a popcorn festival versus a bean festival for those old timers that might remember that discussion. But Scott will be greatly missed, and I just ask now for a moment of silence in honor of Mayor Arthur Scott Hadley. All right, we have an agenda before us.
Move to approve the agenda. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a set of minutes to approve from the May 9th, 2022 regular session minutes. Any changes? Motion.
Mayor, move to approve the May 9th regular meeting minutes.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May 9th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We were all there then? Okay, good. All right, next is...
Pardon me, I'm going to recuse myself from this next agenda item.
Very good. Next is public hearing, PUD 93-6.
Case number PUD 22 dash... Sorry. Got them out of order. Back to the drawing. Case number PUD 22...
93-6.
I'm sorry. Randy, do you have that? Because I've got two of the same thing, and I don't know.
93.6.
Yes, I know. I know which one it is. I just have two. 93-6. I don't have it. What can I do?
Do you have a copy of the minutes? Do you have a copy?
No. I don't have a copy. Hold on. This is it. That was the cyclory. No, I don't have anything. Oh, yeah, I do, sorry. Excuse me.
Technical difficulties?
Yeah.
We will be right with you.
I apologize. Yeah, one more time. Case number PUD 93-6, SSP number 12. On an application filed by Grand Communities LLC 3940 Olympic Boulevard Suite 400, Erlanger, Kentucky 41018, the applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of 37 single-family lots and four multifamily buildings consisting of 35 units on 26.64 acres. The property is located on the south side of New Germany Traybine Road, east of the golf course, further described as Book Four, Page 10, Part of Parcel Five on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Mr. Burkett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We got notice from the applicant, they're requesting that this application be tabled until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So we're recommending that we table this until then.
Okay. And that date would be, who's got a calendar?
June 13th.
13th.
June 13th?
June 13th.
I guess it says right there in front of me then. All right. We've heard that the applicant requested this be tabled. This will, when it does come back, it will still be the first reading. It will not be, we're not bypassing anything. There'll still be the public hearing. So is there a motion or a discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to table public hearing for PUD 93-6, SSP number 12, to June 13th, 2022, at the applicant's request.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table PUD 93-6, SSP number 12, till June 13th. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And let the record show, the councilmember Vales is back at his seat. Next is public hearing, PUD 22-1.
PUD 22-1, SSP number one. On an application filed by Creekside Cyclory, 1271A, North Fairford Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45432, the applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 3,240-square-foot bicycle sales and service retail building on 1.4 acres. The property is located on the southwest corner of Grange Hall Road and US 35, further described as Book Two, Page Six, Parcel 26, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. If there's an applicant present tonight that would like to make comment on this process, please come up and do it. Give us a name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Conrad Dillon. My address is 2701 Roanoke Avenue, Dayton, Ohio 45419. I am the owner, along with my father, Mike Dillon, of Creekside Cyclory. We were before you a couple of months ago for the rezoning of this piece of land, so hopefully you remember a little bit about what we do. But we started a bicycle store about two and a half years ago, just before COVID, and we've been very successful with our bike store. We sell bicycles and accessories and also do repairs, a lot of repairs, since about 5:30 this morning today. And we have outgrown our space quite rapidly, and we're looking for a new space. We did find this piece of land, and we want to build a shop on it. So we've talked about this before, the benefits of having a bicycle shop there right on the bike path in terms of the cycling community and bringing in tourists and visitors to Beaver Creek. So we hope that you will listen to our proposal. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor Stone, members of the council.
Good evening.
Before you sign, application requesting specific site plan approval for PUD 22-1. Should you choose to approve this application, it would allow for the construction of an approximately 3,200-square-foot bicycle sales and repair shop to be located at 1429 Grange Hall Road. So the property under discussion is currently vacant, located just south of the US 35, US Route 35 and the Grange Hall underpass. The site was rezoned, as you may recall, in early 2022 to a new PUD, and within that PUD rezoning, it did allow for the sale and repair shop permitted uses. So the building that's being proposed is 3,240 square feet. It is for both retail and repair. It's 70 feet wide by 45 feet deep, at approximately 17 feet tall. The building is constructed primarily of a brown brick with an EPIS wrap. Additionally, it does have some wood accent features along the front of the building, as well as around the sides and towards the back, to give it some additional architectural interest and to tie the entire building together. As far as access into the site goes, it is a singular access off of Grange Hall Road. It's a shared access with the Goddard School. That access was put in when the Goddard School was constructed, and that access easement does exist now. The south side of that access easement is, does have curb and gutter. The north side doesn't at this time. One of the conditions of approval does require that the rest of that access point also be improved. There is a turn lane left into the development, as well as a turn lane going right into the development as well. As shown in the plans, the applicant is also proposing to construct a sidewalk along the entirety of the frontage of the site. At this time, that sidewalk does not connect to the bike path to the north, but in the future, that last section, it's about 400 feet that goes under US 35, will be completed, and then there will be a quick, simple connection from the bike path down to the shop if someone does need to visit the shop. Based on the square footage of the building, the zoning code does require 13 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 14 with two handicap-accessible spaces, so the parking requirement is being met. As far as landscaping and screening goes, for the most part, the applicant, the site does meet the requirements of the landscape code. We did add two conditions of approval that require, first of all, that an additional row of shrubs be provided, additional row of trees be provided in between the two sites along the detention pond. It is a dry pond, just to give a little bit of a barrier between the two. And then we also added a condition of approval that requires that three-foot shrubs be installed along the southeast portion of the parking lot to block the lighting, block headlights spilling out onto Grange Hall late in the evening or early in the morning, depending on the time of the year. The applicant also submitted a lighting plan, a photometric plan. That photometric plan shows that all of the light poles will be 16 feet tall and will be located in, within landscape islands. We did add a condition of approval that requires that they be full cutoff fixtures and that the lights be reduced to 25% after closing every evening. And then finally, they did not submit a sign package. However, we have added a condition that requires that all signage, any future signage, adhere to the requirements of the 01 zoning district, and the 01 district is consistent with the other office development in the area, so it should blend well with that. So staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the attached motion, and if you have any questions, we can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this application? If there is, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public input section and move on to council input. Do we have any comments from council members? Please just jump in this time.
Well, start, just want to thank you for the really beautiful plan that you put together. Appreciate your continued investment in Beaver Creek, and I wish you all the best success there, and look forward to making that connection from the bike path with that sidewalk. That's all I have.
I'm replying. It was wrong.
Same line as councilmember, I mentioned, I was just interested in the timing on that, when that connected up. How are they going to do that, under the bridge and then over to the bikeway? Is it, looks like a huge chasm there, where the four-foot sidewalk stops?
It comes to stand.
Then they got a, how will they do that?
As far as the portion of the, of the path that will go under 35, that hasn't been planned out yet. So that's a future project that is projected. So we don't have a timeline on that part of it. So at this time, they're going to be putting in the sidewalk from here down to here. So it'll just leave that portion that the city will have to install in the future under the, under the bridge. But it's, it's pretty flat, so there shouldn't be an issue there.
And just as we're well aware, except for right now, except for when the city has grants, we do not have funding to do sidewalks. So until such time that the city is funded to have, to be able to have the type of funding that allows sidewalks, only our grants require sidewalks, when we're doing such road improvements, do we add them. So we haven't added sidewalks in, I don't know since when, long before I was here probably, if ever, so.
Okay, any other quick comments? I'll just, please.
I just wanted to say thank you to the applicant for continuing to stay in Beaver Creek. I actually purchased my first adult bike from Creekside, and so I'm very excited to have you guys closer to the bike path, and I am sure I will soon be one of those that gets you up at 5:30 in the morning to fix what I had broken. So I'm very excited to have you here and just want to thank you again. I wasn't here when you did your rezoning, and so I just wanted to extend my thanks. Thank you.
All right. And I'll just tag on, it is, it's a very nice-looking building. It's going to be a very nice asset, that stretch of the road, and so...
I just have one thing. I too wanted to thank you for building, it's going to be a nice-looking building. The only question I have is there at the retention pond, since the Goddard School is next door, I know we're going to put some trees or something there to protect, I know how kids have a tendency to see water and go to it.
There's no water.
Yeah, it's a detention pond, so for the most part, it should be completely empty.
That's the only concern I would have.
And I have a dry pond next to me, and there's never a puddle in it. I mean, it just, it depends on, you'd have to have a huge rain most of the time for it to build up.
This goes back to a thing that happened to me once before, and we ended up with a young child in the, in the water, so I just always think about that.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for the Creekside Cyclory on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per Section 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 12. I further move that this motion, with all the conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of the council meeting.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 22-1, specific site plan number one, just a little longer version. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, ordinance resolutions and PUDs. Resolution 22-19.
Resolution 22-19 to authorize the application for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership 2022 Federal Grant Program on behalf of the Beaver Creek Police Department.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is our annual Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant that we do through the government, the federal government. It's a grant that provides funding up to 50% of the total costs of our, the city's purchase of approved bulletproof vests. Since 2000, we've taken advantage of this grant, and we've, actually, they have defrayed the cost of, to us, $68,199 and a few cents. Federal money's been used for these vests that we've bought since 2000. This year, anticipating the year coming up, to purchase 15 vests as replacement vests for patrol officers for a total cost of $14,992.50. The city's share would be 50% of that, which is $7,496.25. Additional monies will be placed into the police budget to defray the city's shared costs of these vests, and we are recommending the council adopt this resolution to allow us to continue taking advantage of this grant opportunity.
Thank you. Any comments?
Move to approve Resolution 22-19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief, just one quick question. Is any, are any of the ARPA funds available for that sort of thing or not?
Do you recall? Do not believe so.
Okay. All right, just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Resolution 22-20.
Resolution 22-20, a resolution authorizing city manager to sign a letter on behalf of the city of Beaver Creek stating the city council does not oppose the transfer of the proposed liquor license from Rapid Fired One LLC to On Par Enterprises. proposed liquor license from Rapid Fired One LLC to On Par Entertainment LLC.
Okay, I will go through this and I may need the assistance of Mr. McHugh, the city attorney, to explain it in case I get it wrong. But this is not our typical liquor permit, the transfer. This is a liquor permit that the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control sent us notification of this request regarding the transfer of a Class D1 and D2 permit from Rapid Fired One LLC in Huber Heights to On Par Entertainment LLC is going to be located at 4464 Indian Ripple Road. It's the old fitness center there at the Kmart, the old Kmart Plaza. This transfer is an economic development transfer, which the state titles Trex, as noted by the Division of Liquor Control. Now, Ohio Revised Code 430329 states that this liquor permit may be transferred to a different owner at a different location in a different city. The same ORC section states that the transfer of this ownership and location of the permit may occur if the municipal corporation acknowledges in writing to the Division of Liquor Control that the transfer will be for an economic development project. In a sense, these folks that are going to be operating On Par Entertainment, there are no liquor permits available in the city of Beaver Creek for what they're looking for, so they, the state will allow it under this Ohio Revised Code to transfer or sell, transfer permit from one location to another, so from Huber Heights coming into Beaver Creek. So the state, we have documentation from the state saying this is going to, they'd like to take place, this happen. However, they have to show that we need a document signed by the city manager that basically states we're acknowledging that this transfer is going to a location where they're doing this economic development project. And the documentation we have from the state on their state codes from the Division of Liquor Control, we're stating that's what they're doing, so they're supposed to be investing a little over $2 million into this property and they're going to be building this facility that has inside of it, it's going to be a bar and a restaurant, karaoke, mini golf, darts, mini bowling, and they're anticipating 500 patrons inside this location. But for them to do any of this, they have to have this letter first, coming from us to the state, saying we're acknowledging that's what they're wanting to do before they allow this transfer of the permit from this one business to another, from one city to another. So that's what we're doing here this evening. That's what the resolution is.
That's interesting. That's first, that's a first for me, too.
Yes. In my many years, this is a first for me as well.
Mr. McHugh, any, I mean, have you reviewed to see that they do or don't meet or?
Mayor, based upon, based on what information we have from their council, it does appear that they do meet. And this, this allows them to start the process and apply. It does not mean the city is necessarily agreeing, and if we found something later through this permit process that the city would want to object to, we still retain that right. But in order to even start this process, because this is an unusual one, and there have been other ones in the city this has been done over the years, we have to do this first, to start. And then assuming everything checks out the way they say, it really shouldn't be a problem, but it is a, it is a process used infrequently, but it has been done in the past.
So is this like a precursor to a zoning application? I mean, are they going to have, it sounds like they're going to have to build or, I mean, redevelop or do something to meet the standards? So I assume you'll have a zoning.
Or it probably is, I think the zoning's probably appropriate, but they will have to comply and they will have to provide, I mean, they're going to have to, what they are claiming, they have to provide to the state and assuming they recommend that at some point, we'll get further notice of that and then the city could object at that point if we find something is not as was originally, we were advised of, shall we say?
Renovation of an existing building and want increase in size?
Well, it's also the number of people, the sales, things of this nature. You know, it's all part of the economic package that they're doing to do this and that's, like I say, it, you know, this is a more expensive process for any applicant, I know that, but it can, it is one of those little exceptions in the law that is allowed.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 22 dash 20.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22 dash 20. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to discussion items. And I kind of asked this to be put on the agenda, but, you know, we have limited amount of time between now and November. We have a continuous differing of interpretations as to what regular means within our charter, the word regular. And it's been, our legal council has advised us along and shown the verbiage within the Ohio Revised Code that that limits us to the November election. We've had opportunities over the years to consider putting something on a primary election, but have never been able to do it because of the way our charter reads. So I'm thinking that it is in our best interest as a city to make that verbal change, the wording change, from regular to something else that sort of mirrors some of our neighbors and that it then complies with the Ohio Revised Code. And so for that to proceed and to be, get completed in time, we, I am asking that, that we have this discussion and that if there is no objection, that we ask Mr. McHugh to go ahead and prepare that wording for us. So before he actually went to the time and trouble to do that, he wanted to see if there was any objection from council. So the floor is open. Discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify what I understand from you and to tell the millions in the audience, you're talking about charter amendments.
Yes.
And you're asking, the way our charter currently reads is that we can only have a charter amendment done at a regular election, which is meant to be November. And so the discussion here tonight is for us to determine if we want to change our charter to allow charter amendments to be done at any election.
It, well, not special.
General.
Well, special, special.
No, again, yeah, let me get to figure out.
Yeah, let me, if I may. What you have before you is, I sort of highlighted the word regular and the manager has put that up there, but that, that is the key word here in this particular situation because the Ohio Revised Code under Title 35, that's the election section, defines either have a regular municipal or a regular state. Therein lies the issue. Under the Constitution, and the intent here is to broaden this to allow us to come to really mirror the Ohio Constitution, the Ohio Constitution allows at a regular municipal, but then a special election. Special election includes May. And that really is the intent here, where other communities allow charter amendments in May, we have tied ourselves to the term regular. And so what I, and that's, you know, I'm not saying we just remove the word regular, but that's, that's the focus of this.
I mean, it could be that simple.
It could be that simple. It could be that simple.
You'll give us that advice.
But it, it's not a complex change and it doesn't change anything of substance beyond when the citizens can consider and vote on a charter amendment. That's all this is about, is simply to remove the regular, that it has to be at a regular election. Because as they say, many of our elections in Ohio are special elections. And so that would cover this.
So this gives our community a lot more flexibility to change our charter at least a couple of times a year if, if they felt and we felt the desire to do so.
Correct. Yeah. Because here's the other issue, too, and I, more details I probably want, but the Ohio Constitution also requires that, that if council or you get a charter commission comes in and you, council moves forward on something, has to be, there has to be an election between not sooner than 60 days nor more than 120 days, which almost assures you, puts a very tight schedule and many times of the years, the only time you're going to be able to make that schedule is a May election or a special, what is a special election, May. But that's the intent.
Anyone else? Well, if I don't hear any objection, I would like to suggest that council prepare the documents. I'll prepare an ordinance. Thank you.
You want me to mention the timeframe and the three readings?
Yeah, you can, you can mention that if you'd like.
It had been mentioned by Mayor Stone that a couple of things council has pointed out on the timing, and because of the timing, it almost guarantees, because it has to be, what'd you say, 90 days before, 120 days? I mean, there's that rule.
Yeah, it has to be, the Ohio Constitution says that the election has to occur not sooner than 60 days nor later than 120 days, but the Ohio law also says that you have to file for the election not less than 90 days. So you get this window that assures you that any ordinance to do this is going to have to be an emergency because it won't go into effect before the 90th day. It may make the 60th day requirement, but you know, you're really, you're kind of stuck because the 120 days with two readings in 30 days, you're outside.
So to allow maximum public input, if there would be any, the thought here was to have three readings. There are several people going to be absent on the first reading, or the first meeting in July. So the thought here was to have council prepare this for the first meeting in June, the second regular meeting in June, and then have a, the first reading, I think council would need to, probably be a good idea to motion to have three readings, with the third reading being on July, I believe it's 25th, which would be as an emergency. So at least there, you know, wouldn't, it would be, pass as emergency only because the way in which the law reads it, the Constitution reads it, you have to have these in place, but there would be three opportunities for public input as we normally only have two. So that, if everything's okay, if we instruct Mr. McHugh to prepare the ordinance, because unlike putting a levy on a ballot, which is a resolution, a simple resolution, a charter amendment requires an ordinance, so.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to council time. And Councilmember Bales, you want to start us off?
Sure.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your opening thoughts on Mayor Hadley. Scott was a major influencer of mine, for sure. I think he led by example and, and really showed me what it was like to put this community first. We served together on the Fourth of July Committee and I just feel like he taught me to be a good leader and have the community in my heart, and so my thoughts and prayers remain with his family and his friends and I'll always remember Scott. I wanted to also say that I stopped out at the Whartonshire Barn. The barn is looking fantastic.
It is.
I think it was cool to sign one of the batten boards that will be installed on the barn and I think it'll be a great gathering spot for our community and, and also a kind of a lasting remembrance of the Memorial Day tornadoes. So a great job to our Parks Department for getting that together. Last week, I attended a golf course advisory board meeting. I thought I would update you a little bit on that. The team at the golf course is putting together a formal policy regarding golfer and adjacent homeowner liability with regard to errant golf balls that sometimes fly out of bounds and onto private property. They have been provided with a couple of the Homeowner Association language with regards to property owners' responsibility as well. And so they've also decided that they'll more than likely put up a couple of additional signs, especially in the locations on the holes where golfers tend to have a propensity to hit the ball out of bounds. So Mr. Landrum is likely to see a policy come across his desk that will kind of reiterate that point and remind our golfers to take some responsibility if they happen to damage private property. Also, the golf course is putting together a food and beverage RFP in order to determine interest for, from potential restaurant entrepreneurs or catering companies that could offer expanded dining operations for the golfers as well as the community and provide special event catering and so forth out there. So I look forward to seeing how that goes. On a personal note, I'd like to congratulate all of the school teachers and administrators for getting through another school year. My son finished up today and my daughter a couple days to go, and so they're both very excited and so am I. I'd like to congratulate my daughter Kara, who was selected to participate in the middle school's Entourage Show Choir.
Oh, wow.
So she is very excited and we'll begin that rigorous schedule next year. And then finally, and.
It's never ending.
Yeah, yeah, I know, right? I need to take some notes from you, Don. Finally, last but not least, today is my son Jack's 16th birthday, so I just thought I'd shout out to him, proud of the young man, and look forward to him getting his driver's license, knock on wood, tomorrow. So Chief, please let the officers be on the lookout for a 16-year-old out there. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. Memorial Day marks three years since our, the tornado that hit the Miami Valley and want to thank the city and staff for its continued work on this area. I believe 96% of homes have now been refurbished and have been improved, but certainly some more work here and there. On a similar note to Councilmember Bales, I had the chance to attend Shaw Elementary's Family Fun Day, and certainly I think teachers and young people alike are excited to be done. I too had the opportunity to sign a batten board at Whartonshire Park, a very nice way of honoring the community. And so as council members, we've had that privilege to do it, but one of the neighbor kids in third grade, their whole class went to do it, so there's a really nice cross-section of the community that's signed those boards. So thank you for the, those in construction, putting that together. I too would like to thank the Hadley family. When I initially moved to Beaver Creek, I had the privilege of serving with Nancy on a charter review committee and meeting Scott as well. It was very quick, it was very obvious quickly that they love this community and they taught me an awful lot about it, its history, its backdrop, and so I'm very thankful to their whole family. Like to thank Vice Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Adams for attending the Villas at Kings Crossing HOA, some wonderful advice from fellow council members. That's my HOA, and so on behalf of the community, thank you for, both of you for, for doing that. Like to give a shout out to the Beaver Creek High School academic team. They won the state quiz bowl, which is a huge honor, and again, our academic teams continue to amaze me, but Alan Ji, Arun Sanka, Aruna Chalam, Sojo Ganguly and Anna Quang were part of that team and won, so really amazing. And then finally, I think, this will be mentioned by the city manager, but I'd again like to encourage everyone to sign up for the flash vote opportunity. encourage everyone to sign up for the flash vote opportunity. It's a great way of getting feedback for us. You know, I can certainly go out, and fellow councilmembers can go out and chat with as many people as possible, but this is, this is a great way to get a much larger number, something statistically significant, where we can take information, what you want in your community, and then look at it legally and see if it fits, and this is a great way of giving feedback and just, you know, getting the pulse of the community beyond what, what we can do, so. Sorry if I stole any thunder, city manager, but I'm a big statistics guy, and, and this would be really helpful, so please keep signing up. A big thank you to, I think, over 100 now that have signed up, so thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I have to wish a happy birthday to my great-granddaughter Kohaia. She turned two years old on Sunday. It's amazing. I just can't believe it's been two years, but they just grow up way too fast. I also want to thank Scott Hadley and his family for all their efforts to grow our community. I knew Scott way back when, back in the 70s, and he certainly loved Beaver Creek. I mean, this was his home, and he wasn't afraid of it. He wanted the best for the, the community. I'd like to congratulate Detective Brian Klein on his promotion to Sergeant Brian Klein today at the, for the Police Department. I know he's going to do a great job over there. I'd also like to congratulate the outgoing seniors from Beaver Creek Youth Council that were recognized here tonight and the two that couldn't be here, and huge congratulations to the two that won scholarships. It's a scholarship is offered through the BYC to at least one or two of the kids that are graduating, so as we could hear from the young people that were here, they're, they're pretty sharp kids. I also went out to Whartonshire Park. I was really impressed with how quickly that barn has gone up. It seems like just a month ago, we were turning dirt for it, and now it's up, and it's amazing. It's done a really good job out there. Also, as Councilman Doerr said, we attended the Kings Crossing HOA meeting, Vice Mayor Garcia, myself, and Councilman Doerr, and we really enjoy doing those things, enjoy getting out, talking to the community. It's, I think that's one of the better parts of our job, is to go out and sit down and talk with people in either a semi-formal position or just an informal one. I was in attendance along with Mayor Stone and his wife at the Museum of the U.S. Air Force to enjoy the music of the Air Force Band of Flight as they celebrated the 75th anniversary of the Air Force this past Saturday. It was a great evening of music. It's outstanding talent within that group. It's just amazing. They, I think they went on for a little over 90 minutes without a break. They just went straight through. And I also attended the Blessing of the Bikes yesterday. Mayor Stone and his wife were there as well at Kill Care. I was there with Green Bucks, and Green Bucks is the recipient of the proceeds from the Blessing of the Bikes. And I know there were several hundred motorcycles out there, and there were a lot of people had a really good time. The weather cooperated, and everybody seemed to really enjoy themselves, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I had the pleasure of judging a science fair at Trebine, and it was very interesting. So we had some third graders. One, there were two young ladies. They were my favorite. I said, "Okay, tell me about the steps of your experiment. Where did you start?" And the, one girl goes, "Well, first, we had to clean the entire house." Well, she didn't. I did before she came over. And so it was just, they were so cute. The second step was, they were trying to see what plants would grow in different fluids, and one of the fluids they thought they would try was milk, and so one of the steps in that one was to throw it out, because about a week later, the whole home was starting to smell. So a lot of fun, a lot of great creative minds, and always great to encourage science and engineering within our students. Addition to that, I would like to extend my congratulations to the class of 2022, not just our Beaver Creek Youth Council members, but the entire class. What a tremendous accomplishment, and, you know, class of 2022 and all the classes behind them have really overcome a big hurdle with COVID and kind of missing a lot of their integral parts of their high school career, so congratulations to them and best wishes. Addition, I'd like to let everyone know that on June 3rd, Raffi's Amigos is holding a golf outing at Beaver Creek Golf Club. The sign-up deadline is May 27th, but the proceeds from that go to Beaver Creek Kiwanis and then to the Beaver Creek Junior ROTC. So if you are interested in golfing, I would encourage you to come out. It's always a great time, and hopefully we'll have wonderful weather. Last, I just want to remind everyone that this is Memorial Day weekend. I hope that all of our residents have a great time and get to spend some quality time with their families, but in addition to that, take a moment to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our nation and who cannot be with us this holiday season. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. It was also my great honor and esteemed privilege to attend the funeral rites for former Mayor Hadley, and again, I want to-
Extend my special thanks to his family and for the leadership that he has exhibited over the years for the development of this community, and most importantly, his very favorite project with the Popcorn Festival. Also attended the Rotary on Friday, had a speaker who was rather outstanding, talking about the Dragons and all of the great things that are going to be happening this season, have been and will be taking place. It was very, very interesting. Also, I would just mention again, as, as Councilmember Schwartz mentioned, the Memorial Day and the significance of it, coming back. Encourage our citizens to attend our 2:00 PM Memorial Day service. Mayor Stone, a leader in that, at the Veterans Memorial on North Fairfield, and I would hope that as many citizens as possible could turn out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you very much. I, like everybody else, want to extend my condolences to Mayor Hadley's family. It was really nice to be able to get there early to see everybody at their services, and all of the wonderful pictures of the mayor over the years. They had some really good ones out of the things that he's done, the accomplishments that he's had in the city. His favorite Beaver Creek hat was there that his wife designed for him, one of the first ones with the old logo, so it was just really great to see what a wonderful part he's been in the community. And then also, I can't believe it's been the sixth year for the scleroderma awareness, and what amazes me every year, sir, is that you stay in the audience for the whole meeting. So thank you so much for coming, as much as we appreciate the opportunity to give you that proclamation. We appreciate that you stay and you listen to us. Vicar up here sometimes.
I put glue on his seat.
Bob's holding your car keys, it sounds like, but no, thank you so much for being here. We look forward to having you again next year as well. Just a few things on deck for me. So tomorrow, I will be in Columbus all day for the legislative updates, so we'll have about two and a half hours or so of legislative briefings and updates that are pertinent to our area. I know there's a couple that we've talked about that are on deck, so I'm interested to hear about those. And I appreciate the opportunity to attend the Village of Kings Crossings Homeowners Association meeting, always a great time, and I've reached out to a number of other Homeowners Association meetings. If you haven't heard from me, please reach out. We'd love to schedule a meeting with your residents as well. And then, as I mentioned at our last meeting, our police department is partnering with Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission to provide and install free bicycle lights. So Councilmember Schwartz, this may be for you, for your adult bike. Here it is up behind me, but to do, if you want a free bike light from our police department and Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, you can go to Angels Pass Park from noon to 2:00 on Saturday, May 28th. This is all part of the Bike Month Bike Awareness, and I think we had Bike to Work recently, about a week or so ago, so kudos to everyone who was able to get out and do that. And I think that is it for me. Appreciate everyone's time.
All right. Thank you. Well, Mayor's report, some of them have already given, they say where they were with me somewhere, and that's, so I don't have to repeat those, but, but I will say the Blessing of the Bikes and the 75th anniversary at the Air Force Museum were, were outstanding as usual, and if you ever get the opportunity to go hear the Air Force Band of Flight, please do. It's, they put on one very nice show, and they, they work hard. They have, it's amazing, some of the things that, they have more than one of the members of the Band of Flight have a PhD. I mean, these are people that are dedicated musicians, and they are very, very good and well-educated as well. Memorial Day's been mentioned, but I will add that Colonel Patrick Miller will be our speaker. So he also has a new title right now, and it's Brigadier General Select, Patrick Miller. So we can't call him general yet, but he's very close. So he will be our speaker, come out and join us. This is rain or shine, so please come out. I had the pleasure of joining Mayor Keller from Fairborn as we went and addressed the 445th. And the 445th, for those that don't know, are the ones flying those planes around, and you're looking up and say, "How do they stay in the air?" Those big planes that are C-17s that are flying around all the time. But every year, the, they gather a group of their members that are eligible slash encouraged to, or in line for promotion. And so they do these leadership classes, and I did it last year, and by myself, and this year, Mayor Keller and I both joined up and teamed up on them. They outnumbered me, by the way. I was the only Army guy in the room, so, but the, but that was a good time. We, it's just a personal one, you know, two-on-one, or so, want to speak, discussion with the group of Air Force people from the 445th. Paul and I are both veterans, so it was kind of appropriate, we kind of understood both sides of the coin, but their, their goal was to try to, not so much to just the word leadership, but how civilian leadership is similar to and/or different from military leadership, and how important it is for the functions on base to be in touch with the functions off base. And so we had a good time doing that, and hopefully we get invited back again next year. With that, I will turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick few things, since a lot has been mentioned. Thank you. That takes, takes it off my plate. Flash vote, sign up, I'll just say that. We have nearly 250 that have signed up, but we need, we need more than that, so keep going. Spread the word, please. See our website, beavercreekohio.gov for additional information. This has been mentioned too, the bike light event, just, this is this Saturday, 28th, from noon to 2:00 PM at Angels Pass Park, 800 Factory Road, so please come out that and get your free light. This has been mentioned as well, Memorial Day, May 30th, of course, Monday begins at 2:00 PM. Thanks for mentioning that, our special speaker. That'd be great to hear. These events, I don't mean to be proud, but it makes me proud, the effort that goes into this. Mayor Stone helps us a lot with getting the guests and the musical guests, and our Parks Department does an excellent job with this.
You do.
And this is, I, I don't mean to be apologetic, but it's one of the best in the area. This is, you, you would think we are broadcasting some of these events, which it will be recorded, it won't be live, but you would think we're doing this for a, you know, million people, that it's that good of a quality of event that gets put on. So come out and please honor, it's a, like I said, it's Memorial Day, and it's a, it's a good time to honor those that need to be honored. Voodoo Swing, hey, this is very popular last time. A lot of people had good, good times, so it was backed by popular demand. Put on your dancing shoes and join the fun, Saturday, June 11th, 7:00 to 10:00 PM at Dominic Laffino Park Shelter, 640 Grange Hall. So this is 7:00 to 10:00 on Saturday, June 11th, featuring a live performance by the Voodoo Swing Band.
You better know how to dance, too.
Well, you can learn.
And give dance instructions.
Give it to us. I'd be stepping on my own shoes, but that sounds like a lot of fun. Sometimes, you know, with all the electronics and everything else, sometimes some things like this is just what you need to do to, to have some fun that doesn't belong to an electronic device, right? So come out and join us on that. Last thing I just want to mention briefly, because we've, I've seen some social media posts on regarding a couple spots and roads. Out by Goddard School, which is going to be by this bike, bike shop, there's a spot in the road that is a water, was a water main repair that the Green County Sanitary Engineering is working on. That is a rough spot. I don't know if they're done or they'll be back. Engineering is checking with them, but this isn't anything we've done, the city, this was a repair. As well as on Kemp Road out by Lakeview, right before you get to North Fairfield Road, there's still, unfortunately, they dug up the road, put it back, and the water is still leaking. As of today, I saw it, still put, big, huge puddle there, so they're going to have to re-dig up the road as well. When these water repairs, things are, they, they happen. It's infrastructure, it's the county's infrastructure on the water and sewer, but when they repair that, they will put the road back the way it was, but sometimes it's not as fast as we like. They don't use us as far as, you know, they have a contractor that repairs and replaces the road that they've dug up, so it just takes a little bit of time and coordination, plus they have to ensure that the repair is actually fixed. So just be patient with that. We are aware of those two things, and that's all I have tonight.
I'll just add to that. It does take, when they dig up for the water lines, it takes a time for that ground to settle, and so they, they do pave it, but it's going to settle, and so they don't do the fanciest job in the world the first time around, but, but it'll get there. All right. Well, I appreciate that. At this time, we move on to citizen comments, and if there's anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all, please come forward and do so. Just wave. Okay. Thanks for being here. All right. Seeing no one that wants to come forward, we will move on, and it, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn, Your Honor, in a second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.